Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is December 6, 2022. The meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:04 PM. I'm Alex Peterson, serving as President Pro Tem of the Council today. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Mosketa?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Sawant?
Present.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Lewis? Council President Juarez? Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Council President Pro Tem Peterson?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. If there's no objection, Council President Juarez and Councilmembers Herbold and Lewis will be excused from today's City Council meeting. Hearing no objection, Council President Juarez and Councilmembers Herbold and Lewis are excused from today's City Council meeting. Item C on the agenda, Presentations. I'm not aware of any Presentations for today, so we'll move on to Section D, Public Comment. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the Hybrid Public Comment period. Madam City Clerk, how many speakers are signed up today?
We have seven members of public who have signed up, and five are present. And we also have, I believe, three in person.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and start with the remote speakers. And each speaker will be given two minutes. And Madam City Clerk, I'll hand it over to you to present the instructions and the public comment recording.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salish peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general Listen Line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue that it's your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the Listening Line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
Our first remote public commenter is Howard Gale.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale with SeattleStop.org, commenting on our lack of police accountability and this council's failure to support the independence of the Seattle Human Rights Commission. Today, you will confirm a new member of the Seattle Human Rights Commission. When you confirm this person and thank them for their service, will you let them know that after this confirmation, they are on their own and abandoned? That this council will expect them to advocate for human rights, to leave them to be cowed and threatened when the rights they espouse are contrary to the agendas of the mayor, the city attorney, or the community police division? Will you let them know that at times, council members will actually participate in this bullying and threatening behavior or turn a blind eye? This council cannot pretend to support human rights while actively suppressing the expression of it. This council needs to hold open hearings as to what transpired over the course of 2022 when the city attorney and the mayor blocked the Seattle Human Rights Commission from taking meaningful action on police accountability, with the participation of this council in suppressing the voice of the Human Rights Commission. Human rights cannot be determined by this council. It is up to the Human Rights Commission to make those judgments and for the council to support their decisions. Any other situation renders a Human Rights Commission a meaningless fiction and window dressing. Thank you.
Our next remote speaker is Megan Murphy.
Thanks for letting me speak. This is Megan Murphy. I wrote a letter to Teresa Mosketa all about six or seven months ago, and she was supposed to get me in touch with Aretha Basu because I was at the Human Rights Commission meeting last week, and I was able to voice my extreme anger and annoyance because I'm being stalked pretty closely, and it's extremely uncomfortable. And it's by people with a lot of money and power who have not sat down at a table with me and went over the details face to face. It's like this weird mind game that escalated in June. It's a horrible mind game. I go to the gym. I go to recovery meetings. It's very mean because I'm considered disabled from an anxiety disorder and this method of communication by using third parties to follow me, to locate me, to try to make me think of these people. It's extremely uncomfortable, and I'm not given any way of knowing when it ends, if it ever ends. Why does the process have to be so abusive? And it's creepy eerily like this is the best we can do. All communication with this group is like non-tangible, feels psychologically abusive, and this is why I lost custody of my son is because I tried to go to the police about it. So, and I was called crazy. When I think following somebody without asking them is actually crazy. And to be convinced money and power is an excuse is wrong. And it's very extremely mean, and I'm an AA, and it's not a good idea to do this kind of mind games with me because it causes me more stress than the average person because I already have an anxiety gene that's different from other people's anxiety genes. So I need Teresa Mosketa or somebody to get me in touch with Aretha Basu so I can continue to follow along this journey, hopefully holding anyone anyone stalking me accountable. Because they need to ask me face to face or just leave me alone if I say leave.
Our next remote speaker is Caitlin Lewandowski. Excuse me, it's Catherine Lewandowski. If you can, please, there we go.
Hi, I'm sorry. My name is Catherine Lewandowski, and I'm an RN practicing in the state of Washington. I'm also the Board Vice Chair of Whole Washington, and I want to thank the council for taking up the resolution to support universal single payer healthcare, both nationally and within our state. Universal healthcare, like the single payer plan proposed in the Washington Health Trust, is much better able to meet the behavioral needs of people, which will help address our current mental health epidemic, both in Seattle and across the state. Keeping people healthy, both physically and emotionally, will reduce the emergency care needs of Seattle and Washington State at large, which is currently in a crisis situation that has not let up, even with the benefits the COVID vaccine has brought to our nation. Universal healthcare could have saved 330,000 lives, according to a recent study reported in Scientific American, and Washington experienced 14,739 of those COVID deaths. Many of those did not need to happen. Over the years, the reduction of our public health system dollars around the state has left us completely unprepared to combat epidemics like we've been through and any upcoming ones also. And while providing for improved economic and health benefits to our state's residents, it will also help to move our nation forward to achieving the benefits of universal single payer healthcare to all of our nation's communities. The city of Seattle has been such a leader in our nation for being on the forefront of the tech industry, being a cultural hub for artists and musicians, hosting several world fairs, the first being in 1909. And some people even rate Seattle as the number one for having the smartest people living here in Seattle. So I want to thank you again, and I encourage you to please pass this resolution.
Next speaker is Kyle Wujiwanda. I meant to try one more time. Kyle Wujiwanda, excuse me.
Kyle, if he can hear us, please press star six and begin speaking. We can move on to the next speaker and then come back to Kyle.
We can. The next speaker is Katie Greenleaf. Oh, I see that Kyle is now off of mute. Kyle, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay. Katie, if you can just hold on a quick second while we get through Kyle, and then we'll go to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My name is Kyle Wujiwanda, and I'm a resident of District 3. I am testifying and support a Resolution 32074. This resolution supports whole Washington's effort to pass Initiative 1471, urges the Washington State Universal Healthcare Commission to adopt Option A, to pass a state life insurance program, and also voices support for federal programs. I saw the pitfalls of our healthcare system firsthand from a young age. In 2013, my aunt lost her battle of cancer, and it resulted in my grandmother having to file bankruptcy due to the financial impacts of my aunt's battle of cancer. Historically, during presidential primaries, the concept of Medicare for All gained steam. It is extremely important that this issue is discussed and elevated outside of presidential primaries. This resolution supporting universal healthcare access puts both state and federal lawmakers on notice that solutions are available. I am requesting members of the Seattle City Council to vote in favor of this resolution supporting whole Washington State Universal Healthcare Initiative. Thank you for your time.
Katie? If you can, please press, there you go.
I re-muted myself. Apologies. My name is Katie Greenleaf, and I am a Seattle voter and a licensed mental health counselor. And I am also providing public comment in support of Resolution 32074, supporting the whole Washington State Universal Healthcare Initiative. I just want to thank the council members for hearing this and addressing this issue. As a private practice therapist, I am watching the Seattle area discrepancies in terms of access of mental health care widening. But even those with resources are really struggling with our current mental health care system and insurance system supporting folks with mental health services. So the average cost for an out-of-pocket mental health therapy appointment right now is $160. That's the average cost for a therapist here in the Seattle area, which, when you consider most people require weekly mental health services for three, six to 12 months, that's quite the expense. And a lot of people are finding that private practice therapists are not able to navigate the current insurance situation. There are so many different insurance plans. They all have different coverage. So it's really hard for folks to find a therapist that takes their insurance and has the specialty they need. That's not even talking about the long wait lists for folks that are on Medicaid or Medicare and trying to receive mental health services. The other thing I just wanted to mention is the fact that, sorry, I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous. When people's insurance and healthcare is tied to their job, then if they want to change their job, they often have to change their providers, and that's a real medical problem and health problem.
We will now move into in-person public comment, and our first speaker is Marguerite Richard.
And now I can't I say who I am. I'm Marguerite Richard. Ho, ho, ho. Yeah, and a bottle of goodness. Thank goodness. That's what I'm doing right now. Because I put number 16 down, Human Rights Commission, because I think we're still being treated inhumane. And this woman that you're putting on there, she has a lot of history. But does she have a history for fighting for indigenous black people? And if she is, like they said, shake her hand, make a friend, and show my face. I come up in here, that TV is dead over there. That TV up there is not showing me. But if I come from the mayor's office, I bet you you'll be showing my face. And if that's not discrimination, what is it? What do you call it? That's what I'm concerned about, that the minds that the voters that put up on this rostrum has a different perspective on what matters to us today as far as our race, inequality, Rosa Parks getting arrested back in 1955? Five, yeah. Then I come here and sit down on the first floor, loose here devil. See, he trying to get up in my tongue too, loose here devil, because I'm gonna talk until the Lord takes my last breath. I'm gonna speak. Just like over at King County, all that disruption with our free speech. Are you crazy? If you're crazy, go find somebody, like you say, putting all this money into mental health. You check in before I check in. Is that fair enough? If you check in first, before you ever tell me what.
The next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Is Zihai? Zihai, my chief, dirty council rats. Yeah, very aggressive rats. With Nazi Gestapo, democracy fascist. It's exactly who you are. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Agenda Number 16, about people who you supposed to be bring to Human Rights Commission. This person what is right now will be in Human Rights Commission, will be a witness. What has happened here today and what has happened before, because I speak many times before. You don't show people faces. By definition, you are pure criminal. Because benign council don't doing this, you know what this means? It's a pure conspiracy. So by definition, you will criminal, and I bring this case in court, no problem. So right now, we have a witness from Human Rights Commission. So might right now question to her and to member of Human Rights Commission. Are all Human Rights Commission a freaking idiot, a critina? Don't understand. When you don't show faces, that's only good for you. It's not good for people, and 100 people here, maybe 1,000 for last seven months. You're doing this for a long time, and I complain to everybody, to everybody, including country council. So situation right now very simple. A situation very simple. You possibly stop on this because you're doing this for one particular reason. Your faces, everybody show 24/7. So you go for election in '23, so nobody show faces people here. So possibility, so you will be elected, go probably by 100 percentage or 100 times. So I speak right now to everybody who listen to me, to exactly in Seattle, 750,000 idiot and Human Rights Commission. Stand up, America. Clean this dirty chamber from this criminal and critina. Stand up.
Our next speaker is Andre Stackhouse.
Hello, Seattle City Council. I'm very happy for today's public comments in this vote on the Universal Healthcare Resolution 32074. My name is Andre Stackhouse. I'm a Seattle voter from Green Lake, but I also represent the nearly 80,000 people who have signed onto I-1471 to get the Washington Health Trust onto their ballots. As Campaign Director of Whole Washington, over 22,000 of these signatures came from Seattle residents, and the Washington Health Trust could provide every single constituent of every single council member here comprehensive healthcare. These constituents are signing because they know that in a time of global pandemic, the repeal of Roe v. Wade, inflation, and international conflict, that we need the stability that universal healthcare would bring now more than ever. This is an issue of national importance, and we need the Seattle City Council's leadership now. The 2018 Medicare for All Resolution was a fantastic first step, but it does little other than ask a federal government far from here to take action. That is why today we're asking you to vote yes on this resolution, bringing universal healthcare one step closer to reality in Washington State. So we may lead with our example while saving money and providing comprehensive and equitable healthcare to the people of Washington. I just have a little bit of extra time, so I'll add that the number one cause of bankruptcy in Washington State is medical expenses. And this is ready to implement legislation. It includes its transition plan. It includes its financing. And if given the consideration of the City Council and the state government, we can get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Monty.
I'm here speaking on behalf of, or not speaking on behalf of Whole Washington or Aviation Solutions for 350. An issue I'd like to bring up is that we did try with our Initiative 1471 to get endorsements from elected officials. What we've seen change over a short period of time, and we did get five endorsements, that what we've seen change since some time back is that we've seen that in Washington State, we have airports that are flying over CTAC that are causing what we call, what the UW is called Ultra Ultra Fine Particulate Matter, that is very toxic compared to your normal particulates, which are caused by trucks and cars and normal traffic. What we need, though, in this venture is that we have to be seeing to the fact that the people in nearby areas to the airports are experiencing a longevity of 12 years less than the people who come from some of the districts that did not endorse this. From like Laurelhurst gets 84 to 85 years of longevity in their life. And by comparison, we would see a need for more healthcare. So what I recommend is that we float, have the city to float a float a passage of a referendum, councilmatic, to put on the ballot the passage of a single payer system at the city level or county level. And that would address some of the issues, including such things as a 42% greenhouse gas increase that's been discovered in the CTAC. I mean, from CTAC or aircrafts that are passing over Seattle, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, and public commenters are welcome to also email their full comments to council@seattle.gov. Thank you. Thank you.
Council President Pro Tem Peterson, there is one more public commenter who has come back remotely. Okay, the person is Roxanne Thaler. Roxanne Thayer.
Oh, yes. Roxanne, if you can hear us, press star six.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I pressed, okay, great. Thank you so much. I was missed there for a minute. Hello, my name is Dr. Roxanne Thayer, and I am urging you today to adopt the Universal Healthcare Resolution before you. As you are aware, there are many reasons why this is essential. Today, I'm going to share with you just one of them, the Wall Street takeover of traditional Medicare. Traditional Medicare is 57 years old. It has never charged more than 3% overhead, and this year it is at 2%. That alone is enough to adopt the Universal Healthcare Resolution before you. However, the incredible success of traditional Medicare is coming to an end. In 2019, Donald Trump started the complete privatization of Medicare. President Biden has not yet stopped it. Privatized Medicare, called ACO reach, begins in selected corporate health settings, including the Seattle Poly Clinic. In just a few weeks, it can charge up to 40% overhead. It is time for each of us to do everything in our power to realize improved Medicare for all. Seattle City Council members, today it's your turn. Please adopt the Universal Healthcare Resolution before you now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes the in-person and remote commenters.
Thank you. Thanks for everybody who commented. We have reached the end of the list of registered speakers. The public comment period is now closed. Colleagues, we'll now move on to Item E of the agenda, which is adoption of the Introduction and Referral Calendar. Colleagues, if there is no objection, the Introduction and Referral Calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the Introduction and Referral Calendar is adopted. Item F of the agenda, Adoption of the Agenda. Colleagues, if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Item G, Adoption of the Consent Calendar. We'll now consider the proposed consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include the minutes of the November 29, 2022 meeting, payroll bill, Council Bill 120478, and the Fourth Quarter Employment Ordinance. Also on the consent calendar are the 19 amazing Get Engaged appointments who we heard from yesterday at council briefing. Colleagues, are there any items you would like to remove from today's consent calendar? Okay, hearing none. I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Councilmember Mosketa?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The consent calendar items are adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Okay, now to committed reports, and there is one item on the main agenda here. Will the clerk please read that item, Item 1, into the record?
Agenda Item 1, Resolution 32074, supporting the whole Washington State Universal Healthcare Initiative.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 32074. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Mosketa, as sponsor of this item, you're recognized in order to address it.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I'm excited to bring today for your consideration Resolution 32074 in support of whole Washington Universal Healthcare Integrative Initiative to endorse the people's initiative to endorse the people's efforts to pass the improved Medicare for All through whole Washington statewide initiative fourteen seventy one. This is also supported by calls to pass U S Senate Bill four two zero four, a bill which establishes Medicare for All National Health Insurance Program and also the U S House of Representatives, House Resolution nineteen seventy six, a bill to establish a national Medicare for All Health Insurance Program. As I mentioned yesterday and has been evidenced by where we have put the investments in this year's budget, the COVID pandemic has demonstrated the negative ramifications on working families and individuals, especially focused on those who did not have access to high quality health insurance and access to quality care prior to the pandemic. The pandemic has exacerbated existing inequities in healthcare and lack of access to health insurance. And we have seen a disproportionate impact on the number of people who have contracted and died from COVID. But these disparities only expose existing disparities in our system that has long not created a accessible and equitable health insurance system across our country. We are one of the only, the only industrialized nations in the world to not offer high quality, affordable, universal healthcare to all of its residents. Here in Washington State, around four hundred and thirty thousand individuals have no health insurance coverage. And on top of that, even more residents are underinsured. We know that we can do better. In the richest country in the entire world, we can do better than what we are currently doing to serve our residents, to serve working families, to serve our elders and our youth. And it's also good for small businesses. As someone who has worked with the Healthy Washington Coalition for about seven years prior to joining the Seattle City Council, as someone who worked for the Health Coalition for Children and Youth while working at the Children's Alliance and fighting for healthcare for all kids, we know that it's not just health insurance and access to high quality health insurance and health coverage that's essential for those families and individuals, but it's also good for small businesses. Small businesses who have said that they don't want to have to be the one to shoulder the cost of increased health coverage year after year for their employees and their families. They want what's important for, want what's good for the health of their clients and their employees. However, this should not be something that small businesses have to shoulder. Many small businesses have also talked about the need for universal healthcare solutions so that it doesn't default to the employer based health insurance system that we currently have in the United States. The pandemic has exacerbated these longstanding health inequities. And as we saw folks lose their jobs at the beginning of the pandemic, we also saw people lose access to health insurance. This was also true for small businesses and entrepreneurs who, if they had shut their doors, also were left without the resources needed to provide their own health insurance. That is not right. We need universal solutions and I'm proud to have been part of the coalition in previous years that has called for statewide solutions so that we can promote a national system that works for everyone. Especially given what we've seen in the pandemic and especially given the exacerbated health disparities that we see right here in our own city. There is a growing call for us to pass the whole Washington initiative to ensure that more people have access to high quality health insurance, that more folks of color, families of color who are disproportionately dealing with the impacts of lack of access to health insurance and health coverage and who've been disproportionately hospitalized or have died from COVID. The time is now for this council to show its support for this statewide effort to really begin a conversation in earnest about how in the wake of the pandemic, we step forward and provide health coverage for all. I'm excited about the opportunity that this initiative presents. And I think that passing this resolution today supports the call for a healthy economy and healthy society so that we can move forward out of the pandemic in a more equitable and healthy way. The resolution reads in part, whereas Article twenty five of the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights sets forth that, quote, "Everyone has the right to a standard of living adequate for the health and well being of himself and his family, including food, clothing, housing, medical care, and necessary social services. And the right to security in the event of unemployment, sickness, disability, widowhood, old age, or other lack of livelihood in circumstances beyond his control establishes a fundamental right to healthcare." That's from the U N declarations of human rights. It goes on to say, in our resolution, whereas according to the Commonwealth Health Fund, the United States infant mortality is higher in the United States here and the lifespan is shorter for our residents in the U S compared to other comparable economies that provide universal healthcare for their residents. The resolution explicitly points out the disproportionate impact on BIPOC communities by saying, whereas black families, excuse me, black women face three times the maternal mortality risk than white women in the United States with an overall near twenty four deaths per one hundred thousand live births for all women in the United States. This statistic is nearly three times higher than a country like France that is, that has a comparable nation to the United States, economy to the United States. It goes on to say, "The Urban Institute shows that nationwide, uh, black adults are fifty percent more likely and Hispanic adults are thirty five percent more likely than their white counterparts to owe money for care. Women are more likely than men to be in medical debt. And whereas people of color, people with disabilities, members of the LGBTQI community, women and low income families are more likely to face lack of affordable health insurance, lack of affordable, comprehensive healthcare." So I encourage a yes vote on this resolution here today. I want to thank Whole Washington, who is working to establish the state level universal healthcare system. I want to thank them for the work that they have done to file the initiative with the Secretary of State in March of this year to create an all inclusive health insurance plan. Supporting this resolution, which supports Initiative fourteen seventy one, would create an insurance program that would cover all healthcare services for Washingtonians across our country, excuse me, across, across our state. This resolution was brought to you from community. It was a request from advocates from the Washington State Democratic Central Committee, Healthcare as a Human Right Coalition, the Puchas Town Advocates for Retirement Action, Whole Washington, King County Women's Advisory Board, Washington State Federation of Democratic Women, the Women's Advisory Board to King County Council, and the Thirty Fourth Legislative District Executive Board. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any additional comments? Okay. Yes?
Good. Well, I.
Please, go ahead. Councilmember Morales, please.
I just want to thank all the advocates and Councilmember Mosketa for bringing this. As somebody who actually signed this initiative, I'm excited about the opportunity for the state to really start moving in that direction so that we can provide access to healthcare for everyone and so that it is done in a way that's equitable so people can take care of their families. And I think this is really important because we know as callers mentioned, as, as folks here in chambers mentioned, medical debt is a huge problem in this country. So we need to make sure that people have access to adequate healthcare, to high quality healthcare, regardless of whether they can afford it and regardless of what zip code they live in. So I look forward to supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Mosketa, as a sponsor, did you want to finish it here? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to a vote then. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Councilmember Mosketa.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Sawant.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Council President Pro Tem Peterson.
Abstain.
Four in favor, two abstentions.
The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Colleagues, next item on the agenda, item I, items removed from the consent calendar. There were no items removed from the consent calendar. Item J on the agenda, adoption of other resolutions. There are no other resolutions for introduction and adoption today. Item K, other business. Is there any other business to come before the council? All right. Colleagues, thank you. This concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on Tuesday, December thirteen at two P M. Hope you all have a wonderful afternoon. We are adjourned. Thank you.